We call the meeting to order. Everybody's here except for Cheryl will be gone today. Additions to the agenda, there's one underneath the business for number three. Any other additions Bob?
Nope, missed that one.
Can I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Approve and correct the minutes from the December 5th regular school board meeting. These are your packets.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. My natural reports. We're gonna start off with the November 2017 Treasury report. That's in your packet. Bob, anything?
No, I had a short discussion with Joan before the meeting just to make sure that everything's going the way that we intended to go and right now everything is working the way we anticipate.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report.
I'll second it.
A motion from Mark and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Audit and approval of the bills. We have the additional November 2017 bills and the December 2017 bills. I had the opportunity to go in this afternoon and review the bills. I didn't see anything out of the norm for this time of the year. Bob, do you have any?
Yeah, I think I would just mention that tech check is on there for $20,000, 530. It's nothing unusual of what we're doing that's tied into our E-Rate billing on what we're doing to upgrade our systems in the buildings.
So, again, other than that, I didn't see anything else that really jumped out. So I would entertain a motion to approve the bills.
Make a motion.
Okay, I got a motion from Mark and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. All right, we don't have anything underneath the consent agenda. And our first business will be with the youth advisors. It looks like they're just coming in or what?
They were coming at 1:10.
Okay.
And 1:25 and then the tech crew is gonna come following that.
Okay.
I'm gonna share them.
And that's, and that's fine. So we can move probably down to number three or?
Number two.
We can go to two for the resolution.
Oh, okay. Number two is review and consider approval of resolution directing administration to look at budget adjustments for the 2018-19 school years.
This is a yearly resolution that the board has adopted. It just gives me the authority to start working on our 18-19 school budget. So we'll start to take a look at this year's budget where we're at and we'll come back to the board as I have in every year with recommendations of adjustments, some to this year, but certainly that affects our next year budget. So that'll kind of go to the facility or the finance committee first on those types of things and then we'll come to the board.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I got a motion from Bruce.
I'll second it.
Second from Heidi. Any further discussions? And since it's a resolution?
We have always, as we had the debate, we don't have to, but the tendency for this board has been to do a roll call for resolutions.
Yep.
All right, Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number three, Jennifer Words.
I think I need to get some other place for Jennifer so.
[laughing].
[inaudible].
Jennifer Words will be presenting information concerning elementary school morning targeted services program?
Yes. Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good, good.
Fantastic.
Well, I'm Jennifer. I teach in the elementary school in the special education department. Been here since 2010. And David Urland just asked that I speak a little bit about programs and services we're offering to students outside of the school day, outside of the traditional school day. So basically, that's what we're going to do. There's a quote that's attributed to Albert Einstein that says, "Everybody is a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing it's stupid." As a special education teacher, I absolutely believe this, but I would argue that our entire school, Painesville Elementary, the teachers believe this as well. When you walk up and down our hallways and listen to the creativity going on in the classrooms, the way the teachers are engaged with students, not just in a traditional lecture format, but hands-on learning, the use of technology, the ways that teachers collaborate and innovate within the building, and I think they do it so naturally that they don't realize that it's kind of exceptional. So I think we're really blessed. We have a great staff over there that's very committed, and not only committed during the school day, but also committed beyond the school day. Slide two. So these are some of the things that we offer at Painesville Elementary School that are beyond our typical hours. So, and I'll go into a couple of these with more detail, but we have a morning team that meets at seven o'clock in the morning voluntarily. The students come happily. In January through April, we offer targeted services after school in math and in reading, and that's to help students who feel like maybe they're not exactly where they want to be with their reading and math skills, and so we try to help them get to that point. In the summer, we do around the world in a week. We have the kids get into exploration of different countries and cultures, and they come to that as part of their summer school. That's also a targeted services program. Through the integration grant, we run a theater camp that involves literacy standards and media literacy as well. And then finally, this one is not hosted here, but part of integration is we send a group of students to Melrose for a collaborative summer school program, and I didn't find the numbers on that, I apologize, but we do have a lot of students here who are involved in that as well. Go to the next slide. So one near and dear to my heart is the morning team, the seven o'clock group. Our students get together, we work on math and reading skills, but we also train them in mindfulness, how to use their brains more effectively, how to calm down the part of the brain that gets over alerted when we're anxious about something, particularly test anxiety and those kinds of things. The kids do cooperative problem solving, and we do community service. The kids in that picture were our spring group. They had raised money through the Bulldog Supply Store, which is our little school store, and through money management lessons, we teach them to reinvest a third of their profit into their store, to invest a third in the community and to invest a third into the school. And so they get to choose a charity to donate to, and the last one they did last spring was to Coburn's Cancer Center Pediatric Ward, and the woman from Coburn's came out and met with them. It was kind of a fun thing. Right now, they are doing, we have 18 kids enrolled, about average of 15 show up each day that we hold it, and this morning they raised $39 selling crafts that they made for the holiday season, and that money, 100% of that will be donated from today's and tomorrow's sale. So that's kind of a fun way. We always say we kind of trick them into learning. You know, when they're helping manage the school store, they're practicing math skills. We don't call it that, we call it managing the school store. We do a lot of reading activities and math activities that are fun, and so hopefully they're getting, they're getting learning even though they didn't expect to. Okay, next slide. And then in the summer, around the world in a week, we help the students in small groups explore different cultures through research, literature, food, and art. And so we put kids from first grade through fifth grade, we mix them up into groups so we have kind of natural mentors with our older students, and all students can participate then in the research. They are in groups of four or five, they research a different country, they have to find examples of a folk tale, an art project, a recipe that they have to make, they have to learn how to speak, the greeting and some polite words in the language that's spoken in that country. And then we have an open house for the community, and it's been very well attended in the past couple of years, but people come and sample the food and hear the stories and are greeted in the languages. So that's been a lot of fun for us the past few years, and that, again, that's targeted services. Then another one near and dear to my heart, our integration theater camp. When we wrote this grant initially or this project, we were looking at math and literacy standards, and what we found is it was a little more challenging to put traditional math standards into this program. We do work on things like spatial reasoning when we're working with blocking and things like that on stage, but it's very literacy-heavy. So the kids not only participate in a show, this is last summer's Lion King, they also attend a professional performance, and then we read literature that's connected to that performance. So one year we went to Beauty and the Beast, and we found multicultural examples of Beauty and the Beast story that were, apparently every culture has this story in some form or another, so the kids read and researched them, and we compared and contrasted them, and then looked at how it was portrayed on stage and critiqued that. The students also in putting together their own show, they have to learn a lot about how to solve problems, how to work together. We have between five or six, or between five and seven days to pull off a full show. This was seven days, and they learned choreography, music, three different African languages, songs in each of those languages, and then the entire show memorized. With this particular program, we had a curriculum that taught them about apartheid. I did not know that The Lion King is based on the apartheid struggle in South Africa, so that was good learning for me as well. So through the language that's used in the songs, we were educated about why those words are used and what they mean and why they mean what they mean. So the kids had this very broad experience of learning, and again, hopefully in a fun way. They didn't have to take tests on, well, this was kind of their test, they had to perform in front of 300 people, but it was all good. They also write critiques of the shows that we attend. They have to work together on reading fluency, practicing characterization, learning different elements of theater, so it's kind of a big package all wrapped up in the literacy standards. And I think we were able to hit, gosh, was it 12 targets maybe with the last camp? Yeah. Okay. And then this is very conservative because I left out all of the Melrose hours, but just this year, from January until now, kids have put in more than 30 hours before, 30 hours after, and 78 hours during the summer, time outside of the school day to be in our school and to be participating in our programs. And so I thought that was kind of fun. And beginning with Albert Einstein, I have to end with it too, creativity is intelligence having fun. We want all of our kids to feel their intelligence, and if their intelligence happens to be on the creative side, we want that rewarded and celebrated as well. The other thing to note really with this is none of this would happen without awesome parents. We have wonderful parents who drag their kids out of bed at six in the morning and get them to school by seven for morning team, who will pick them up late in the after-school programs, who get them here in the summer, who make that commitment to their children. So really, it's just a wonderful community experience to have teachers that are invested in this, administrators that are supportive of this, and then family members who participate and keep us going.
Any questions for Jennifer?
No. Awesome job, Nolan. Good job.
Thank you. It's very fun.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would say that the kids should be ready, so if we give them a chance to come on in, I don't want to wait too long with them because we have limited time with the students before they.
Yep. Does anyone want to get them?
I was waiting for somebody to look at them.
Jen, would you mind just mentioning to her that we're ready?
Yes.
Some issues for mutual concerns with the school board and youth advisory council. So.
We need the kids for that one.
We need the kids. Up here.
In the front.
Come on down.
All right, I'd like to welcome our middle school principal advisory. They've got some comments and some things to share, but certainly feel free to ask them some questions, and we decided Ellery was gonna start off the conversation.
Hi. The Chromebooks have worked really well, except that a lot of people forget to charge their Chromebooks, which is an issue, but for the most part, some people have their chargers with, and like they've worked really well with classes, and they've eliminated like at least one book for us, so our backpacks are later. That's good.
I like the Chromebooks because, well, one disadvantage, people like they use games during classes when they're not supposed to, but yeah, people do forget to like charge theirs and lose their chargers.
I like the Chromebooks with, I see where they're coming from with the chargers, and I, I forgot to charge mine one day, and like they said, people are really good about getting, if I ask for someone, they'll be like, "Yeah, just use mine for that," or something. And that works well. And I also like the Chromebooks because it's nice, instead of paper, I like to type my tests, so that's really good, but yeah.
I like the Chromebooks because everything is really organized and you kind of know where everything is, so instead of scrambling through your backpack and stuff trying to find a piece of paper or something, it's all right there. And it is a little distracting when you see a kid playing a game while the class is going on and stuff, so I've been kind of looking around and seeing what kind of games they're playing so people, so they can get blocked and stuff.
Megan, could you expand on that, just a little bit and tell about why it's organized? Because they may not know a lot of the Google Classroom part.
So we have a thing called a Google Classroom, and teachers can put all your assignments and stuff on there, plus we have folders on our docs and drives that we can put our assignments in, so we don't like lose them or anything and just organize things.
One thing I like about the Chromebooks is that like you can take it home and then, like let's say on the bus, you can still work on it offline, and then when you get to school the next day, just like publish it and show it to your teachers, like through classroom and stuff like that.
I like the Chromebooks a lot because we're taking a lot of notes, and just doing it on the Chromebook is a lot easier, and you can keep track of it a lot easier.
I really like the Chromebooks because I'm not the neatest person myself, so I often have a lot of papers that pile up, and so it makes things difficult to find with the Chromebooks. That problem's eliminated.
I like the idea when we had a survey for lunch, because there's a, like sometimes a lot of kids don't get what they want for lunch, and it kind of helps with knowing what's going on.
I like the Chromebooks because you don't need to have like a pencil or lead or anything, it's all just right there and you can type.
I like the new water fountains that were put in with the water bottle fillers. It makes it a lot easier and quicker.
Really, I think the Chromebooks are a great investment towards what we're trying to look to do in expanding our electronic department of, well, really knowing how to do that, and I think this has helped tremendously, and so, plus it's, it's nice to have around, so I like to type on it, so, yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, before you can move on, does Ford have any questions? Obviously, the first thing that came to their minds was our one-to-one initiative. It's probably the biggest thing this semester. Do you have any questions for them, kind of in that ballpark?
What you guys were talking about, or Nathan was talking about the kids playing games and stuff like that, obviously it's distracting to some of the kids and stuff like that. I'm sure that, you know, by just raising your hand and pointing that out to your teacher during the class, I think would help eliminate anybody from trying to go on to the both sites or go on to those games and stuff like that. So you guys are gonna have to start policing yourselves, you know, in class in order to get that accomplished though. Otherwise, it's gonna be really a distraction.
If, if nothing else, just let your teachers know what games they're playing, and we can look at eliminating that piece and blocking those pieces.
And we did talk about that in our advisory, is if they can let us know the names of the games, because, do you guys use Quizlet?
Yeah.
There's games like Quizlet and some other ones, and if we just block gaming, it blocks all of them, and they have found they really like some of the different things teachers have found, so that we need their help in finding out what the specific names of the different games are, so we can lock, block them individually by site versus the filter. How about other things we talked about, or share some experiences that you guys have had this year? Ben, Ben is our newest member of our advisory, so maybe we can initiate him by come up with maybe an experience that you've had this semester, or something you'd like to see?
With, just, anything in general? Well, this is my first time going to one of these, and I'm very excited, so, but really something I've noticed, you know, just, this is my second year in sense of being in the middle school here, and I've found, you know, really good people and good teachers, and it's been pretty much an overall good atmosphere. But it's good, great school, so I really not sure how to expand on that any further, so I'm just gonna.
Good job.
I think, yeah, it's been a good year so far. It's going by really fast. I guess that's good. I don't know what else.
I really enjoy that we have the option for, if we're in band, that we can play jazz band in the morning, and then we have our own concert and everything.
With the following students, please stop at the office. Molly Stane, Brandon Zitlock, Evan Shrupp, and Alex Shrupp. Please stop at the office. Molly Stane, Brandon Zitlock, Evan Shrupp, and Alex Shrupp.
I really like the idea of that we have Chromebooks in class, it really helps.
Something that I really like about the school here is extracurricular activities. It really does help the year pass much quicker as opposed to sixth grade.
Can you just expand, Nolan, on what activities?
Like sports or jazz band, as that was mentioned, and other activities that people can do after school or before school that somehow just makes the year go faster.
And sixth graders are still served through community ed, so when it gets seventh grade, they're more school after school.
I like how Nolan said, and how that, all the games, we get to go on buses together, because when we're on the community ed, we all had to go by ourselves, and when everybody's together, you really get to know who you're playing with, and that's a lot of fun.
One thing that I like is like on Friday this week, we are doing like a Christmas homeroom Olympic thing, where like in the morning, we'll be able to watch a movie, in the afternoon, we'll play trench ball, and then we'll kind of get to play games between our advisors and stuff like that, and have like a winner and stuff like that.
I do enjoy like having sports, it gives you something to do throughout the year and stuff, just to build that kind of team stuff, and get to know people around your class and around your like school and stuff.
Last year, or no, sixth grade, I, or like, no, yeah, just seventh grade and sixth grade, I always had trouble because, or like in math or something, because if I, let's say, didn't get the assignment that day, I, or like, I lost my paper, I couldn't find that assignment, and I'd look online and I'd be like, "Mom, where is it? Where is it?" And she wouldn't know either because she didn't know. So with the Chromebooks, you know, you got, during classes, the math teacher will be like, "Okay, so this is," and you can just go online at home and be like, "Oh, hey, there's the assignment." So if you forget, like, so if you forget a paper or something, you can just do it at home, so it's really nice.
I like the sports, it makes the year go by quicker, and like how the seventh and eighth grade boys, football, are weightlifting in the morning.
For eighth grade band, we had a thing called honors band, and we went to Benson or Minawaska, and we got to like practice, we got all the music, and then we went over there and we had like everybody, like a couple different, like 10 different schools. We all computer, not a, yeah, we had a concert together, so we practiced the whole entire day, and then at the end, we had a concert and a ton of people could come and watch. And then the other thing is I really like Midwinter Activity Day, because it pushes kids to do all their homework, and everybody says that they love all of the activities, except I heard some complaining about the water perk, whatever that's called, I can't remember. But I like all of those, especially powdereds, so that's fun, and it's cheap, and everybody can learn together, and they can all fall and encourage each other.
Any last questions from the board for our middle school group?
Is there anything you don't like or have concerns of?
We talked about some of the faucets, and we'll be talking with Donnie about it, is some of the faucets in the building, the can washing faucets are springy, so we brought that up that we were gonna talk about, the lunch survey, and it derived from this group. Other things?
I feel like that it's really hard, like after an event, to like, you want to get all your homework done, but you're like really tired because you like worked really hard, or you know, it was a late night or something on a band concert or choir concert, and so you're really tired and you want to go to sleep, then you have to stay up and do all your homework. I feel like if we had like some buses that were just for sporting events that had like Wi-Fi on them so they could access their classroom, or if they need to go online and look for something, they could use that.
For the faucet thing, in, I think all of the girls, like bathrooms, locker rooms, and same with the guys, they said, either you have to press and hold it the whole time while you're, to get water out, or they don't work and like they spray, or some of them like stay on throughout the whole day. Like I was, like, there's been signs on there that said, "Oh, this has been on for like two hours," or it started then, and they just like keep spraying, and I think that we should replace those first. And then the other thing is the water bottle fillers, those have helped a lot, because you used to, like it takes so long to get the aim right into the water bottle, and then it's all wet, and it's a waste of time, but now like people can drink from the water fountain while you fill it, and that's really helpful. So you can just like run over there before class starts and then get back in time, so you don't have to waste, and you don't get all water all over you.
And one thing we brought up, we put them in high school after last year, is if you can look at it, down the road planning, they put them in middle school because they have been a very positive asset, and then another group that uses it all the time versus having to go into a building to get them. They can come up right for class or right for practice. Probably the biggest spot that we'd like to see an additional couple put in.
So if they see something that needs maintenance, do they just tell their instructor?
Yeah, well, I didn't know about this, so I was like, "Okay, I will be touching base with Donnie again on those." So that might be a thing to maybe put out there on our full net site for students. We do for teachers, but we don't for kids.
Well, if they would just tell their instructors that there's something going on, then at least it would travel, because Donnie can't fix it if he doesn't know there's anything wrong.
It's an ongoing issue. I mean, they're bird baths, just like the elementary school. Why they can't build a decent sink for a school is beyond me. I need to have a panel of people.
Yeah.
Not as expensive, sink is what it is. We go south more in the, it's constant, but I'm not sure where we go with it. And we'll be starting our tenure plan where we'll be talking about those things, although this is a good time to bring those up. Donnie, if I, and I've looked, it's, you would think it would be an easy fix, it's just more complicated because there's not anything that they build that's really, that can, we can just put in there and do it. It's costly for us to replace those things or fix those things, so, but it'll be part of our discussion when we start looking at budgeting dollars to fix things. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, you guys. We'll go ahead, if you guys can have a seniority.
Some of the math teachers got new smart boards, and some of the time, it just always has to update for a long time, so it takes a lot longer for class, and we don't get our assignment on time.
Okay.
And that's one thing with Jonah, as they're looking into bandwidth use with the one-to-one initiative, is one of the things that that would help, we weren't sure how much bandwidth we're using, because they are constantly using that to update.
Yeah, and I think part of what we need to do, we would ask you to be a little patient because we're trying to figure out the bandwidth issue, so as we start hearing things, make sure that we're informed that things are loading slow, because that's why we're upgrading. And I, we do believe that the bandwidth will be the next thing that we need to look at, because with the one-to-one, we're just pulling more of the bandwidth away now, which doesn't leave as much for some of the other things that they're loading them all at the same time. So we're aware that we need to do something with that.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
Ellery, can we give that back to Mr. Hewitt so it doesn't fall off the table, and then I'll have our discussion.
Kate and I see yours over here.
Additional student group, if you could, is we do have our robot, a couple of our robotics kits that if I could show that off while we're kind of working with student groups, if that's okay with the board?
Are you on?
Just turn the mic and see if there's a switch on.
There's a switch on.
Alright. Alright, well, I'm Kate Spanier and this is the high school principal advisory group. Um, I would like to talk about the Chromebooks, cause I really, really like them. Cause, well, I only have one book app to carry around, otherwise everything's on here.
Doesn't look like it, what's in there?
I'm a basketball dude.
Basketball, football, all that stuff's in there, okay.
Yeah, but, so, a lot less paper. We don't, I do everything on here pretty much. And it's all organized in different like classes, so it's, I like it a lot.
Uh, just adding on with the Chromebooks, uh, by using this throughout high school, I can save money and then I can buy a new computer for college, whereas I would have bought a computer this year as my own and then it'd be already two years outdated by the time I got to college. So that's what I was really looking forward to and I could save, um, save a little bit more money, so I wouldn't have to ask my parents for as much. But yeah, I really like, um, Google Classroom is very organized and teachers, they can um post assignments and like I have it hooked up to my phone, so I get notifications on my phone if they post things or when tests and R or and it's just, it's just a really good idea, so I think it's really helpful to have.
Okay, I will talk about the, uh, Mrs. Flora brought, yeah, there, we have an opportunity to take a online business class through, I think it's like a Best Buy professor, as you said?
Best Buy, Mel Rose has connected with Best Buy to um offer, it's a teacher whose teacher, Minnesota certified, would like to do an online course, kind of offer it out there and it would be online, so I kind of brought it up to this group, what they thought, because we don't really have a business program.
Yeah, and I think that a business class is for sure a good idea. I think there'd be a lot of interest and I think a lot of the graduates of Painesville do go into some sort of business, so I think it'd be a incredibly beneficial class for our school, more so than some of the other like social ones we have right now. But I don't, I, I have some concerns about it all being online. I think that that might be not as good as if we had more of a teacher teach it and I think we could, it'd probably be a good thing if we took some classes out and added this business class, cause I think it, like I said, I think it'd get a lot of uh interest, so.
Well, I think along with like the business classes, I think it would be a good thing to have an online business class too, cause like when you go to college, like a lot of your classes could be online and if kids are looking at P C O, it could be another outlook of like how they would, like how they would do on an online class. And I think it'd be really nice to have a business class, cause most kids you look at nowadays are going to school for business or they're going online where they're gonna need business somehow. So to give them like a head start in high school would probably be the best way to do it. And to go back on the one-on-one, I think it's really awesome, especially for kids in like their college classes and honors and everything, for writing your papers and everything. Cause all of their assignments there and she, it's so easy for her to get on your papers and like send her stuff and for her to send it back right away, cause everything's on Google Classroom, so. Yeah, that's my look.
Okay, well, I'm gonna add to all of this, but um, so last, I mean, last meeting, you guys remember, probably remember me talking about one-on-one, how I wanted it so much and now we have it, so it's great, but um, for me, so I'm taking um an independent study stats, so that means I basically do it all my own and I just go check in with him with Mr. Herman once in a while, like when I need help. Um, so I think the Chromebooks are so great because I get all my assignments online, they come right to me. I just look at the PowerPoint, all the notes is right there and I just threw my assignments in online. So, and um, next semester, I'm actually taking a P C O class online too, so I'll just be able to do with my Chromebook right, like right there, so everything's so like there for you, which I really think that's important, um, and I'm glad that we offer that. Oh, um, but yeah, and then so I also think a business class would be really awesome, even if it's online, because I mean, I, I guess now that I've practiced learning online learning and it's also a different way to like learn, so that's probably a good asset for um students to learn how to do online learning, because it's a really, it's a way, it's a lot different than sitting in the classroom, so maybe it's a good, that's a good thing to think about, I guess, too.
Alright, so I'm gonna take it back to me, cause one of the things on our agenda is to talk about how we should start having some of our younger grades start writing more essays to prepare them for when they come to like honors class and get them ready for all of it. And I figured since I've taken almost a year and a half of honors with Mrs. L, I would take that upon me. I would think it, I think we should start having some of our younger, like our sophomores and freshmen start taking more, having more essays assigned to them. Because I know when we showed up, I don't know if Grace can agree with me, but like our junior year, it's kind of like, she shocked you a little bit, cause you come in and you're writing all these essays that you maybe weren't used to writing that much about like having, we had a ten, twelve page, which I guess once you go through college and everything, isn't that bad, but like when you just like come from writing a page and all of a sudden you're writing twelve pages, it's kind of like, holy moly. So I think it would be a good idea for us to start asking teachers to kind of have some of that, so when you get to your honors classes, you're more prepared for. I can do this, like, that's easy, like, like when she signed us to four-page paper now for honors and all of us from last year, all the kids were just like, oh, thank gosh, like it's not like eight pages, so yeah, let's do it, so. I think to get kids to that level already when they're younger would be just a good thing to have.
So, yeah, I, I, agreeing with that, I think this year for honors English, we have four papers due on literature analysis and we hadn't done anything like that in tenth or ninth grade. I mean, we've done like a research paper and just a few other categories of papers, but we haven't done anything like that. And since that's a whole semester of writing in honors, I think that especially be beneficial to put into maybe even like tenth grade. I think there's some room in the curriculum, curriculum to add another paper there and um I don't think the kids are necessarily gonna like it, but I think they'll like it in the long run.
Well, going back to the one-on-one initiative, uh, like if you forget your homework at home, like you don't have to freak all that back, cause almost all the teacher has every assignment on like Google Classroom and stuff, so it's really organized there. And like the lunches this year have been, they've been pretty good. They've been uh better, probably better than last year, I would say, but um, not as good as like uh-
Six years ago.
Yeah, six years ago.
Um, I didn't have a chance to ask, because I was over at the elementary, did our high school advisors have a survey for you guys? Okay, that'll be coming out. We just got it to them.
Alright guys, you told us where you're supposed to put it, I wasn't sure.
Okay, so we'll get it out to you guys on Monday.
Alright, I'm also gonna talk about the essays written in younger grades, because recently in English, we had a five paragraph essay assigned and I had no clue, I had no, I did not remember anything from last year. So I actually went back to my ninth grade teacher and borrowed papers telling me how to write a paper and it helped a lot.
I'm talking about opening the gates. Because, no, there is like five cars coming into one line, or five lines of cars coming into one line and it's not good. We need to open at least one gate.
I think we should open the gates too, because it takes like thirty minutes to get out of there and my house is like two minutes away, so just instead of like going straight through the parking lot to get there, I have to go all the way around.
Um, I would just mention to the students that I have been there timing that. Never in one timing has it ever taken that long for students to get out of there. As a matter of fact, I would mention to the students that every time I timed it, fifteen minutes to get out of that parking lot. But I will tell you what, I will try to get out there and I will try to re-time again as we start, as we're hitting the winter, alright?
I think maybe too, um, with the, the getting out, is just um you as students having an opportunity to talk and come up with a plan of, or just reminding students to take turns. That's what I've heard is, you know, like one row will keep going and everybody else that's coming a different way waits. So it's some, you know, you guys even saying, okay, we need to be courteous when we're in the parking lot and we're trying to leave. You need to start taking turns. This goes, then this row, then this row. Cause that was one concern that somebody had brought up, is that if you're stuck in a different row, you're, you're stuck there, so I think maybe-
And I, and I have seen some growth on the part of students. When I've timed it from the beginning, when we first closed the gates to now, students have become more courteous when I, when I've watched them. So we'll continue to monitor. I, I don't want to make light of anything. We do time it, we'll continue to monitor it. You know, I'd certainly see the speed limit go down in front of the school, because I think that cars come in there pretty quick. But we'll, we'll continue to watch that and I, I will get back out and I will watch again and I will time again.
And just know that safety is our primary concern, so that's why we did, what we did is for safety reasons, so.
Okay, but what, having to do with safety, I think I've definitely noticed that, that I'm terrible with roads, but that road going by the school is super, like there's a lot of cars, like in almost every morning, I, there's some close calls. Like I honestly think it's only a matter of time until there's a car crash in the morning or in times where that's busy or the kids trying to get to and away from school. And I mean, I didn't, I didn't take that way to school last year, so I don't know if that's if it's always like that or if it's just this new year that, that road is super clogged, but it's, there's been some close calls already, so.
And I think the city is, is trying to slow down the traffic, which would help tremendously.
And then, uh, my other question was, would it be possible to open the other gates for a certain period of time and then close them during the day, cause I know the land trans building was one of the main uh safety concerns with like the kids walking out there and stuff. Uh, but even like for um sports and stuff, when we leave, say like at, like nine o'clock after a basketball game ends and everyone's trying to leave at the same time, would it um be any possibility to open or close the gates or are they permanently closed?
Well, I can give you my perspective. Um, I've been there, I get out, you guys see me at games, so you know that I'm leaving when everybody else leaves uh for the most part. Again, it doesn't take too long to get out, particularly if you have some people going out the other exit also. And for the football games, we've tried to have police officers there to speed it up so that they can direct. Um, unfortunately, people don't understand when the police officer waves you through, they still seem to stop and then go. Um, I, I think we'll keep looking at that. Uh, it, it would be very difficult for us to manage opening and closing those gates every day. I it, it'd be difficult. And I have sat there and I've watched cars coming across your parking lot from the other addition. They do not come across that parking lot slow. And um, and, and there is certainly a concern, as much as your concern about that, I have concerns about a student walking and going across and also getting hit because keep, people are cutting across our parking lot, not to come into our parking lot, but to scoot across to, to twenty-three. We'll, we'll continue to monitor, I, I promise you that and we'll watch. And I do time. I actually do sit out there with my little stopwatch and time from the time kids get out of classes to the time that the parking lots are, are clear. And like I said, I, I'm very well aware at the end of the day, um for how long it takes at games, because I'm there and I have to leave through the same traffic that everybody else does. Part of the things that happens at games is that I can tell you that half the people that are leaving from games aren't leaving at the same time. Because so many, if you've been at a volleyball game or a basketball game, half the crowd is still there on the court talking to the kids and envisioning before they leave. But we'll continue to monitor. I do understand the concerns and, and I'll keep watching. And I've been more concerned about winter and how the snow comes in and that kind of stuff, but we'll watch.
Um, okay, well, not to like hang on that issue, but um, just like the other day, I was sitting there and like there's cars that will like fly by the line, so I usually like go out like the second entrance, like closer to the golf course, cause I can just go home that way and get on twenty-three. And there's like cars that'll come, like to get in front of the line, like they don't even wait in line, so that just kind of like makes me mad too, because like we all have to wait, so I just think that, I don't know, that makes me mad.
To my piece, that would be a common courtesy, that people have to wait their turn like everything else. Like I said, I have timed it and it's fifteen minutes to get out of that parking lot for the most part. By the, you guys get out of school at three fifteen, correct? By time three thirty hits, there is nobody in that parking lot that is looking to leave. Um, but I think it is courtesy and watch. No, no. So, but, but we'll continue to watch. I would, uh, my bigger concern is the road itself, you know, slowing that traffic down. I think that would be ea, make it easier for students to get out, because they don't have to worry about some car come flipping down at forty, fifty miles an hour in front of there, you have more time to, to exit. The biggest place that I have seen, to tell you the truth, is if you're coming in off of Old Twenty-three and trying to take a left-hand turn. They get stuck there. Now, if it were me, during, at least two times during the day, beginning of the day when students are coming in and at the end of the day when they're leaving, I would not use that method. I would go further down and I'd come in at that stoplight or I'd come in at the next exit. So I think people have started to make adjustments, but like I said, I, I do understand and we will continue to monitor.
Okay, and then I was just gonna say that I think lunches have been good, uh, well, better, and um the a la carte, like is just really nice. I think like a lot of kids use that, cause like on days when lunches aren't very good, at least you have that like option. But then it's just like, oh, my mom kind of complains about this, but like if there's a day where we only have like three like food items or whatever and then I have to like get something from a la carte, cause I'm still hungry, then she's like complaining, cause we like spent so much money or whatever and, but I don't know if that, you guys have anything to do with that or not?
And I'd also suggest, again, work with Ms. Flora. If there are certain things that nobody likes, you know, we have to know that from the student's point of view, so that we can talk to our cooks and, and make sure that they aren't toppled as, as much or at all. So we, we do want to continue to improve that. I, I think it's come a long ways and we, and with the help of the students, I think it can continue to improve.
Um, I'd have to say that the Chromebooks are really nice, because like you don't have to worry about losing your sheet, your homework or like when you're at home and you forgot your homework at school, it doesn't matter, because you have it all in your Chromebook, so.
Um, I think some of the lunches should be a little bigger, cause sometimes you only get like two breadsticks for the meal and that doesn't fill you up, so.
Yeah, we, we are restricted, just so that you guys know, that we are restricted for calories and everything on there. Um, if they lighten up, believe me, we will lighten up. Um, it's, but the rules that we're going by, just be aware of that. It's not just school issues that we're dealing with all of this. Um, but we'll continue to look and I've heard that they might lighten up on some of those and if they do that, would help with that tremendously, I think.
Oh, yeah, with the lunches, I think they're pretty good right now and like the a la carte too, that's pretty good.
I think the one-on-one initiative is nice, especially for math, so you don't have to get a book or anything. And then you, with your homework, you don't need to worry about leaving it anywhere.
Uh, going back to what Ashley said, um, school lunches often aren't enough for especially athletes who have to stay after school and then they end up having to spend extra money on the a la carte, so it's just bigger lunches would be better.
And on the survey that you guys will be getting Monday, um, that is one of the questions, the trade-off would be less caloric food. So there is a question in there, you know, it's like the amount of ketchup or, or some of those things, so that trade off the calorie count and the salt count and the sugar count, does it change? It's how it's utilized, so that's part of the, some of the questions that will come upon that survey. And then they're planning, and I offered you guys as um my, the discussion group, so when she gets the results from that survey back, that we'll be pulling together to kind of have that conversation and if we pull from Peter, who's gonna pay it, you know? So as far as some of those um modifications or changes. Okay, so you guys can then volunteer.
And we'll certainly check on the rules and regulations that we have to go by. I'd heard that at one time, they had talked about lightening some of those up, but I hadn't heard where that that's at at this particular point, cause those pieces come from the federal government.
So if you all like writing letters, it's a US Secretary of Agriculture. If you write him a letter and tell him you don't like the food and you'd probably get as much of more reaction than a- If you write them a letter and tell you a adult likes the food and you'd probably get as much of more reaction than adults that are doing it. I've written my letters. Nourishment is a big thing. When you go on the site, you can read in there what happens when kids are hungry. It's not as a productive outcome because you learn better when you're full. But it's the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture.
And if we've painted, made it through, any other comments from this group or questions from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted, NHS, National Honor Society, the, this morning, we went to the community center to help put away and separate. I know we got a truckload of chicken that came in, so we had an assembly line. I forget the total number of boxes, but each box had like five chickens in it. And we got probably thirty, forty boxes or something that we loaded into the freezer, which was really cool to see, to see it so full. And then we put away toys and for their toys for tots. And this was just the first group of kids that went through. And then another group of kids will go in March, sometime at the end of the March food drive that the elementary school does. Oh, and us too, but um, so I just think that's really cool, especially to get all of us out into the community and help the community center because they help so many people, which is really cool.
I have one question to clarify. The roads, the cars that are driving really fast when you're coming out of the parking lot, are they on the road or in the parking lot?
Okay, can I talk, okay. And also with NHS, so we're actually doing a lot more things in the community this year. We're like getting ourselves out there. So we're doing things like, we're making like bars and cookies and stuff for like the fire department and we're making bars and cookies and stuff for all like the faculty. And I don't know if that was supposed to be a surprise, but whatever. I kind of planned this, so I'm gonna tell everybody anyways. But, and then we, yeah, so we're doing the food drive and everything. So like I was just gonna like let you guys know that we're like NHS is actually getting out there this year. I feel like, like the past couple of years, like we haven't really been doing much, but this year it's like a lot better and we've been doing a lot more things. So, I mean, as of now, we're actually getting shirts and everything, so it's actually like a big organization now, so, yeah. It's good. Yeah.
Any other experiences from this year, guys? Or things going on in classes or projects that you'd like to share? This is the time that these guys aren't in your classes, so they don't always know what's going on.
The arts programs, band and choir and theater kids, really any arts program have an amazing opportunity to go to the Orpheum Theater in Hennepin to see the Phantom of the Opera. Credit to Paul Bugby who's paying for half of every kid's ticket. And then he lined up the coach bus there and back, which is an amazing idea because one, it's Phantom of the Opera and two, it's only twenty-five dollars where at the Orpheum you could pay a hundred dollars per ticket and sit with your back up against the wall. So I just think that's, that's really cool and I'm really looking forward to it. And I know lots of other people are too. It's so gracious of him to spend his time and money with the kids, which I thought was really cool for the arts especially. Yeah.
I just have, then, I'm glad you answered that part of it because it's first, when you mentioned Phantom of the Opera, so how are these kids gonna afford that? Does, does anybody ever feel left out because they can't even afford the twenty-five dollars? Or is there help from the school for those kids when something is offered?
Oh, Paul Bugby said if any kid has financial problems, he has no problem paying for it.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so.
And on all of our activities, when we have students that teachers and all of that, it can be kind of an issue, et cetera. We do have some donations that have come in that again are part of our Amesville Pride coding order. Helps out with some of those classes as well.
We don't want any of our students not to be able to go because of finances.
I know, I might feel like they can't go.
Yeah, we agree.
And there's a lot of teachers will reach out to families who didn't know. Any other experience?
From my point, I really do want to thank all the students for coming in. And yes, even if it's about the gates. You can talk to me about the gates. I do, we do appreciate the input. We really do. And it's important for you to get your voice out there. So if there are things, make sure that you raise your voice.
Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate. Our last student presentation is the robotics program. It can just started off with some just interest from the kids over the summer and then it slowly has evolved and thanks to the gala and now it can falls in MAXIS Court. It is an official organization. And here is one of our robotic engineers.
They're coming here.
Oh, they are blocking down the call. It was two o'clock, so I guess we are two minutes early. So I'll let them introduce themselves and then go ahead and tell you a little bit about where they're at. It's still a very new program and we're learning lots as we go, both as advisors and administrators and students. Hey, you guys, why don't you introduce yourself first and then you can move forward?
I'm Jason Evans. I'm David Klein.
I'm William Nichols.
I'm Megadussel.
Yep, and this is the robotics. As you can see here, our golden boy, still in progress. A lot of progress. Lot of progress. We just, we just took the top off. This is the scissor lift idea we have here. We just kind of replaced it. This was the original right here. And so it was attached, of course. And what it did was, we have it for these light cones, these light little cones, you know? And we were just trying to extract a little bit off of this because this is really heavy. This is thick and it's a little wobbly, so that's why we wanted the better scissor lift idea.
Drive train idea. We really have liked something like this. That's why with, we have like two teams that we go with and they had this kind of idea. We kind of simplified it a little bit. Honestly, all it is is a one-to-one gear ratio. So it's just, so it's pretty, it's pretty simple, but it's, it's really effective. And if we want to like switch out gears, provide more speed or something like that, we can do that every one.
And this was our very, very first little robot here. We called it Bloodshed. And this is like a claw bot. This is just the run-of-the-line basic Vex claw bot. It just has one claw and four wheels, but it is rather effective. We made one, we call it the ground pound. It was very short and it was very slow, but it was, it was strong. We used tracks instead of wheels. And so this time we're going over to wheels, so hopefully we can get a little faster. You know, because a lot of the competition is just time. We have, what, one minute, forty-five seconds? And that's just us driving along with, there's another part where the robot drives itself. But even then, time is a pretty critical thing. And you can't get a lot done if your robot very slowly does, you know, the only thing it can do. So, you know, moving around is important, so that's why we're upgrading here and we're just trying new stuff. And then we have this new claw here that we're working on. Instead of just this dinky little claw, we have this. Jason, go show them, go show them, go demonstrate.
This is the claw. Just made it, has like little prongs on the side to grab these. So we've seen, going to the competitions, we've realized that a lot of people's main problems are grabbing the cones. And you'll grab the side and it'll fall off. So I thought we should try, I made this like just to kind of hook into the cone and it'll grab it. And it's like pretty stiff in there, you can't drop it at all. Yeah.
So, yeah, exactly. There's also other ideas that were thrown around with rubber bands, using rubber bands to pull up cones. And we're, it's still work in progress right now. I think we have, well, now we have part of one solid robot. We had to take this one that I was telling you about with the tracks down. We took that apart and we were trying to rebuild another one, trying to build it better. And for right now, their robot was the only one we had up and going and now they're trying to build upon it. It's just trying to do better than what we have done.
One of you guys showed them your, part of the robotics competition is keeping track of all of your problem solving and, and experience. So could one of you maybe say a little bit about that?
So we're supposed to keep a record on this notebook here, or any notebook really, but it's really strictly regulated. You're supposed to do it in very specific steps. And so we're trying to do it as neatly and nicely as we can, illustrating and writing down all of our ideas, trying to write down processes that we're using, writing down who had what ideas and what we can build off of and just trying to like organize ideas, right? So that even next year's teams or teams before us while we're gone, so that they can have ideas and records that they can go off of what we left. Yeah, you, yeah, you know, Russ. Are you guys aware of what the competition actually is? Do you understand what they're competing on?
Do you want to tell them about your competition?
Oh, yeah, our competition, it's in a twelve-by-twelve foot square. And there's eight of those big blue cones. And they're four, they're two different colors and four of each. So basically, our goal is to get as many yellow cones on the bigger cones as possible within a minute and forty-five seconds. And there's different areas that there's an inch PVC pipe that we have to get over and then a two-inch PVC pipe we have to get over to put that, the big cone in with yellow cones on it into those zones to get that many points. So the one is five points, then ten points, then twenty points over the biggest one.
Something like this.
So, long story short, would be stacking cones. So there's, there's a big difference. And we have this big scissor lift here for these light little cones right here. I mean, you can tell the difference in weight. And then we have to keep these a little lower. And this is the biggest struggle is being able to move these around.
Yep.
Is it three pounds?
Two pounds.
So there's, the part of the competition is the cone and the points that they get for the cones. Another part of the competition is their explanation of their notebook and their processes, et cetera. So the judges will go around and then that's all put together. And currently, you guys have been doing the workshop nights, right? Up at St. Cloud. And your first competition, row competition is when?
January six.
January six.
Windom, correct. Yeah.
And then there's also, sorry, castles, which are just mounted points. Basically, this is where we stack cones up on top. It's just higher.
Oh, yeah. So these are called mobiles, specifically because we can pick them up and move them around, right? I mean, I guess we don't have one to illustrate here, but we had a little mechanism to where rope dropped a lever down or, I'm sorry, a little scoop down, platform down and we pull it back up and it would scoop these up and over. We're trying to work on a scissor lift sort of style so that the arms bow out. We can drive in and it can bow back in so that we can maybe even stack cones on it while it's on the robot. That's a lot more efficient than setting it down, then stacking cones. And, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, that's where I was going. Mobiles, so these are mobiles. And then we have stationary goals, which are, as you described, pretty tall towers in comparison to robot size, especially like this, that you can get high stacked on. And that's another key part of the game is to get highest stacked. So let's say you have two stacked on a goal in one area and in the same mirrored area on the opposite team, they only have one. Well, then you win and you get more points because you have highest stack, you have two more. And so there's lots of little itty-bitty rules that you kind of got to keep track of. But, I mean, really, once you go through a couple of competitions, it's quite easy and it's easy to understand.
Can you guys talk a little bit about where coding comes into play with this? Just because it's something that we've been trying to bring into the building, can you?
I think it's really nice because this, the programming language, they call it Robot C. It's not too hard for people to figure out, so that's why it would be nice, you know, like middle schoolers would be able to do it, maybe elementary schoolers, but like, robotics kind of takes, like, you have to think of the designing, the building, keeping everything organized in a notebook, coding, it kind of breaks everything in. Whereas like if you were to learn something, like I've learned coding, but then I've never worked something like this. So that's why I like to do, do certain things that combine everything.
So is there a part of the competition that the robot has to do it itself without directions, correct?
Yeah, the first fifteen seconds is the autonomous. And that's where everything's programmed in the robot and it does it all on its own. So it can like drive forward and like park in that area and that's worth points. Or it can even pick up cones, which is a lot of work because you have to know where they are and where they'll be positioned to like find, yeah, a lot of coding.
Yeah, and I mean, it depends too on what special parts you have on your robot. We can add things, but right now what we do is it kind of be like blind, right? So we tell the robot to go forward and then we tell it to lower this and then pick it up again. You know, so it doesn't totally know what it's doing, but we are telling it what to do, so it'll do it. But there are certain parts we can add, like line sensors, rotary encoders, which basically tells you how many times the wheels spin, so it can tell where it is and what it can do, right? And that's like more of an evolution that we'll have to get to. But right now, it's a lot more coding for us because we are telling it step by step exactly what to do. Turn motors on, let motors go forth through seconds, turn motors off, you know? So, yeah. But it's, coding is really, it's fairly easy. Once you know one, you can get a lot done. And a lot of it would be putting the same things over and over again. The same kind of code that runs the wheels is the same kind of code that moves the arm up and down. It's just altered just a little bit, different names and different speeds.
So explain what a code is.
Um, oh, good one. So.
All right, Mark.
So basically, how coding would start off is we'd go into a blank program file and we'd set here.
It's basically language for the robot. Like we speak English, it speaks Robot C. So it's like little segments of like turn motor on while the joystick is forward. So it'll turn it on and it'll be spinning it forward. I tell you like go it and then no longer applies to it anymore, so it'll stop.
So we have a little box here called the cortex. And that's basically like the brain, right? So we tell the cortex what to do and the cortex tells the cords what to do. So we put all these little plugins in there. And what it does is if we tell it turn motor arm on, well, what it's doing is it's going back in steps. So when we go to motor arm, well, it looks for arm. Well, we have already preset in that arm is another name for port two, right? Ports are numbered, there's one to ten, right? So, yeah, there's for motors. And so we'd say turn arm on, well, that would redirect to turn port ten on, put supply through. Now we can say turn it on one hundred and twenty-seven, which is the max value. I'm not sure exactly why they have it from one to one-twenty-seven, but one-twenty-seven is the max value, so that's as fast as it can go. Now, the slower you go, the more power you get, the faster you go, the more speed you get. But it goes hand in hand. So what we do is we tell it arm one-twenty-seven, so the arm will go up one-twenty-seven. But if we told it negative one-twenty-seven, then it would go down one-twenty-seven, right? Which way we supply the power in the motors, you know, kind of determines which way it would go.
I think something with like, if you want, if you want to elaborate on like what one-twenty-seven means, it's like, there's like different ratios. So like maybe sixty, if you put in sixty, it'll read sixty and it'll send out like two amps. So then when it sends out like those two amps, it'll, it'll move the motors and the arms and everything you need, add those two amps, which'll, if you put a little bit more into it, it'll have more speed and everything like that.
So one-twenty-seven is basically speed and how like your car speed up or the robot. So when we go into the parts category of our robots, you cannot just go and say, oh, I want to use this part in the middle of the street. Like this, in front of this wall, so you can't use that. Let's say we want to put a piece of plastic on it. We have that shadowproof polycarbonate on our robot and it has to be less than like ten millimeters thick.
Yeah, all of our parts are regulated by Vex. So they all have to be built of these like metal shapes that we have. And we just have to put them together like, we were thinking a good idea would be like use a sponge right here to grab the cones. Then pull it really well, but that's not, Vex regulates, so we can't use that.
Exactly. The only thing we could maybe put on is for decoration, like we could put candy on it, whatever. As long as it's not in use with the robot, as long as it does not touch or affect the cones in any way, then it's fine. And, yeah, well, and there are certain little things like zip ties, rubber bands, tape, right? As long as those meet within the Vex criteria, being so wide, having so much of elasticity, it's, some of them are like that. There are very few even 3D printable parts that we can implement, although I'm not sure fully what the regulations would be on those. They have polycarbonate regulations, so. I suppose. So, yeah. It's Vex's way of charging you twelve bucks for rubber bands.
Yes, there is some of that. But so this is what we have begun as far as the start. Other questions from?
How much time do you put in a week?
We go to Vex's official EDR website. So Vex has three different programs. They have the Vex EDR, Vex IQ, and then. Vex IQ is for like, it's the in-classroom one. And you can do this well for in-classroom, but this would be more for like the high school. But the name Vex IQ, which is all plastic parts instead, non-sharp edges. So basically, this is more competition versus education. EDR, or I'm sorry, IQ would be more for teaching younger kids. They're all snap plastic parts, kind of like labels, right? Versus this is more like metal Legos, like erectors, yeah. So, yeah, a little more chaos, but.
So how much time do you need to meet, when do you meet, when do you do this?
Um, we don't have necessarily a full, like, sets schedule, but we are most of the times meeting Tuesdays and.
Mondays and Tuesdays after school until about five or five-thirty.
Yep.
And then whenever we can, like, well, sometimes we come before school, if you want to quick get something done, so it's meeting that quick.
Advisories, lunches, lunches, whenever we can, really.
Their coaches have been really flexible coming in at different times and being available to work, but, um, so they put in a lot of hours. Yes, at the conclusion of the board meeting, we also do have the field put together. Um, I can open up lab one thirty-one, that's the actual twelve by twelve game area, that if any of the board members want to stop down and see that.
It's simple to run, it's basically a controller. Looks like a video game controller, so it's really easy for us to use, because, you know.
I was gonna say, for you guys, for me, it wasn't very easy to do.
Yeah, Heidi had the opportunity.
So are you the entire team?
No.
Uh, no.
How many are there?
A few others.
What, ten?
At least thirteen.
Ten. Do a lot of some for the one-act play, so they have practice at the same time, so they.
I think there was originally thirteen on the list, and a couple did make them one-act, which is, so they have dropped out at this point, but may start up again down the road.
Yeah, ten main people, we have two teams, so five to a team, so we've been working on two different robots.
And, I mean, we technically have enough people to make a third team, um, but we'll get there. We'll, we'll.
We need more parts for that.
The people that were in the one-act, like, I talked to them, and they were, like, really disappointed. They got the part that they wanted, but they aren't in our wanted.
Well, good luck at your first competition.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thank you.
So cool.
That brings us to the conclusion of our student presentation.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys. So, we are going to personnel. Underneath number one, personnel review and consider approval of the following of the two thousand seventeen eighteen agreement with District seven forty-one Principal Association.
The administrative negotiation committee did meet, and we did talk about contracts. Um, we still have some to go, but these are two that we're ready to bring to the board. And I'll remind the board that one of my goals, because over the course of my.
Aqsin LaClair, please go to the community ed office. Aqsin LaClair, please go to.
Over the last couple negotiations, because of the finances of the district, um, we have limited our negotiations, they've been fairly low. And, um, this year, I really have made it a point to try to get groups into where they need to be, at least into the ballpark piece. So with our principal's contract, um, you've had a chance to look at it, and, um, there've been questions and stuff. But for the first few pages, it's just about, um, just dates, so all the way through page, uh, four, it's just a changing of dates. When you get to page five, we are going to add, uh, to the four oh three B match, one hundred dollars for the first year, nothing for the second year of the contract. Um, and also for the cell phones, um, we are going to change it so that it's, we're going back. We did allow us to have cell phones in the district owned ones, but that causes its own issues, so we're going to go back to where everybody gets a stipend for the use of their cell phones. So that language has been removed, and you can see that in the contract. And it sits at fifty dollars a month for reimbursement to cell phones. Uh, they do need to show us bills and so on and so forth. When you get to page six, there's some lan, language change as far as age discrimination, and you can see that in subdivision one down at the bottom for eligibility. We did change it so that immediately eligible to claim, uh, their TRA benefit, rather than base it on an age, which is discriminatory. Then on page seven, we get into other benefits, and we got rid of the premature, where you did change it, um, is determined by not two hundred and thirty, but two hundred and twenty-eight days. That's really their, their contract days. And then in subdivision three, we got rid of the premature death piece because it became redundant, um, because of the other piece that we added. And we added subdivision three, which does talk about, uh, the language group and, well, it really does is, um, in the short piece of this, it just stands all of the severance and everything, unpaid vacation days, that will go into the, uh, post-retirement healthcare savings plan, and that's a benefit to the district. Most of the contracts that we have do send them into that plan when they leave the district and retire. So that's just language that we put into all the administrative groups. So any group that comes forward will have that same language in it. Same language that was in my contract, same language that will be in all the administrative groups' contract. Any questions up to that point?
Tanner Stanley, please go to the ed office.
And everything remains same, um, until you get to the wages. And that's really on the end of the contract, and we'll be adding three thousand for the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, and then three thousand to the eighteen nineteen school year. Those are all the changes. It does put the administrators into where they need to be in, in close comparison to other districts in the area. So there, um, it was very interesting, we had a lot of discussion over all of our groups, and, and certainly, if you have any questions, our board committee, uh, can do it, but we've agreed that this, we think, is appropriate. Questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the Principal Association contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, number two, review and consider approval of the two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen agreement with Max Maher, Activities Director and Dean of Students.
We are going to change the title of this. Uh, Max has helped out with some disciplinary type things, even without that being in his direct, um, part over the course of years. So this really does bring him more in alignment, the job description, everything's going to be adjusted to better really say what he's already been doing, and any additional type of things that will be added to him, now that we're also going to consider him a dean of students. Uh, those changes have been made all the way through page one, just really the addition of the title, and through page two. And, um, dates just on the, we went to third page. When we get to the fourth page, there are some changes to it, other benefits. Um, one of the things that I've always mentioned to the group, and we just have not been able to make the adjustments up to this point, is that I have truly said that one of the best banks for the buck that we've had was with Max and the Activities Director piece. And one of my goals was to get people, at least I had mentioned, into the ballpark. Unfortunately, or fortunately, whichever way you want to look at it, uh, Max has gotten way behind. So the Activities Director position itself, and it's just not about Max, it's about the position, has been way behind. And I'm not talking a little bit in comparison to other area schools, and for what he's doing in comparison to what they're getting paid for his. And as I mentioned to the board, I strongly believe we need to get these to where they need to be. One of the areas that he was way behind on was tax shelter annuities, so he's going to, we're going to add five hundred dollars to the first year, to his annuity for matching, and five hundred dollars to the second year. All right? And that brings him in line with our other administrative groups and other groups, um, not only in our district. Uh, then we go down to the bottom, and he was getting forty dollars per month. All the other area or groups that we have in, for administrators, we're getting fifty, and we've added that up to ten dollars. Okay? Then if you go to the next page, that's the same thing that we just added to the principal's agreement. It's the language that says if there's any severance or any, um, unpaid vacation days that aren't used when he retires, they all go into that same account. And that's at no cost to us, it's, there's no cost to the district for doing that at all, but there is a very good benefit to our employees by allowing them to do that. Uh, then we get into the, the piece that he was extremely behind on. Uh, Max, in, in that position, is, he's gotten his master's degree in the field, um, that works with, um, athletic administration. And because of that, we're going to remove the step system that we have. When he went and completed his masters, he moved over to, um, fifty-three thousand for a salary from where he was. That's what the masters had, had gotten him. We are recommending at this point that we get rid of the whole salary piece at this point, because at this point, he will be where he should be in comparison, and I would say in some areas, he'll be lower than other districts, even with this. And, and, and we think this is appropriate, and the committee did. So for the two thousand seventeen eighteen year, he'll be getting fifty-eight nine oh five. And for the nineteen eighteen nineteen, he'll be at sixty-three. And again, we would not be doing this if it was not for the fact that he had, we had managed to get our Activities Director, Dean of Students, way behind in comparison to a lot of the areas that are around us. So I know this is a significant gain, I know that, I make no bones about that. But to be fair, it is something that we need to do to, um, to make it appropriate. Questions from the board? Um, otherwise, we're gonna go in, and you can just see what we've changed as far as the salary schedules, uh, credits and those type of things. Those have been removed now because there's no longer a need for them.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the Activities Director, Dean of Students contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, I think that concludes our personnel, right, Bob?
Yep, it does, we're just informational reports.
Okay, so we're gonna start off with elementary school principal report.
Mr. Sheriff, if you would, if David, would you mind now?
Oh, sure. If you really want to.
Babe, can he? Oh, did you, good.
And it's kind of a good fit, because I'm actually leaving to teach Lego Robotics, and we teach, so what you saw here is they talked about coding, um, they talked about gearing and ratios, and we do that at, in the elementary, starting in second grade. So I have a group of second through fifth graders that will be teaching Lego Robotics for beginners, so. One of my, um, goals as, with community ed is how can we, um, assist the, the district in meeting the strategic plan? And STEM is an important aspect that the district, so we have added in this last brochure even more STEM opportunities. So we're trying to continue to do that, so, um, introducing 3D printing and, um, the Ozobots, the Blockis, all those type of things, so. Uh, we are, um, planning for our spring brochure, so more STEM classes, more activities, um, recreational activities. One thing I've been doing too is, uh, I've showed a few of you have been working on plans for the facility, um, doing some layouts there and trying to get us, you know, kind of get moving there. So I've been meeting with the CTE and admin today, we went over some plans, so kind of learning sketchup and doing some design, so hopefully we can, uh, meet all those needs of the district. Because one of those, uh, on the plan I have is, well, talking about the fitness center is a group exercise area. And right now, our group exercise room is the corner of the hallway, and we have up to sixteen people doing Zumba down in the corner there. So we would love to see the facility and have some space, uh, for that. But we're getting, uh, good participation in the fitness center even more in the winter, which is what we like to see. And I think that's all I have before I have to run. Do you have any questions for me?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, David Orline.
Good afternoon. Uh, and on the robotics and the coding, I was in a kindergarten classroom last week with Garrick, and he was, um, teaching coding to five and six-year-olds using B-Bots. And so it's just amazing how the trickle-down goes and what these kids are, uh, experiencing at such a, a young age, so it's really cool. Want to thank Mrs. Wors for coming in and talking about the targeted services. She has been, uh, since I've been here, um, she's been one of the, um, staff members who's really, uh, taken things and run with it. Their morning team, um, you know, this morning, uh, we had kids showing up at six forty-five in the morning, and they were, you know, they're ready to go. And they have their, you know, getting ready for the, um, for the school store and things like that. So it's really neat to, to see, um, how that, all of the, how all of those programs have grown over the last few years. I started something new, uh, we, we got four new students in, uh, within the last two weeks. And, um, I had ordered a bunch of Bulldog t-shirts through one of the fundraisers at school, uh, that they were having for the sixth grade, uh, trip. And so what we're gonna start doing is when we have a, a new student come to the school, uh, they will get a, a Bulldog t-shirt. And then I am sending a welcome note to the family. So I started that with the, with the four students, and, um, one of the students I brought down when it said that he had been dreaming about getting a, a Bulldog t-shirt, and, and that, that dreams do come true, so he was, he was excited, it was kind of funny. So that's just something that, um, I thought I would, uh, give it a shot. I was gonna start it earlier in the year, but with my, uh, arm injury, I couldn't write, so now I can write a little bit, so it's a little easier. Math curriculum committee update, we are done with our, our standards alignment, and, um, we're actually working a little bit with Eden Valley. We met with, Don Knoll and I met with their, um, curriculum coordinator and a teacher last week, because they're, they're in the same process that we are. We had a great discussion. Then last week, uh, two teachers from Eden Valley, Watkins spent the morning at our elementary observing our teachers, uh, teaching math. And they got to, um, meet after each, each lesson, so that was kind of a neat thing. And, uh, over for the in-service on January fifteenth, and we're gonna be, our math curriculum committee will be coming up with a, a rubric so that we can evaluate math materials as they, as they come in, and, uh, looking for implementation of fall of two thousand eighteen. Any questions for me?
Congratulations on the welcome letter and the t-shirt, that is a really good idea. When we talk about bringing the student population up, and I'm sure you ask them if they go anywhere else, I'll always wear our shirt, right?
Well, it was just so funny when they were, um, of the four, two were, were, seemed probably scared to be in my office, and the other two just thought it was the greatest thing in the world.
Congratulations.
Okay, second, secondary school principal report, Lori Flora.
Hello. Um, well, most this last few weeks, um, working with our principals advisory groups, kind of finding out how the year has been going. So as always, it's really good to hear from the kids and, and then have them share. Um, so I hope, I'm glad that we're able to do that. Um, the other thing is with the robotics team, kind of started that off of just a conversation that came into my office and over the summer. So it's great to see when some of these programs and the things that we input from the kids, that we can make happen for them. And, you know, as the adults, we all know there's some obstacles in our way, and some things that either take us a while to get there, or sometimes we can't do it, but it's nice to see when we can. Um, so it's been exciting there. Amy Bast has joined our office team, so I've been doing a lot of training there, as she's taken Cassandra's place. And then Cassandra, now we're starting to do the training on, with the Mars program and that financial aspect. So that has been a great deal of my time, kind of, um, helping both of them learn their new positions and things, so. Um, we will be starting our curriculum study with our, um, media, which actually transposes into our computer literature, uh, program. So like our, um, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade computer lit classes, as well as the high school computer classes that we offer. Um, so that will be starting at the first of the year, and Garrick will be joining us for that. Right now, it's all based off of Word, so we're kind of looking at transferring that to Google. And possibly, because the students coming over are more apt and in tune with that Google program, do we wanna, in the future, look at switching that eighth grade elective over to something more STEM orientated? So that is gonna be part of, of that conversation with that. So that's what I have for you. Any questions that you have? I mean, our students spoke a lot for us today, so.
I thought the presentation, I enjoyed the one on the robotics. The only suggestion I'd have is, I know there's a group with the Gala Group that put this whole thing together. Do they ever get a chance to meet with the students, or do they come to the lab?
Action.
Okay, because one of the things is they're participating with us, and if they can be a little bit more up to date, we get stuff here that I'm not sure everybody else sees. Good job.
Oh, and one last thing is, we did have one field trip this last week that I was able to go with. We went out to Lewis Industries, and the students toured the manufacturing, as well as the welding part of that plant, and that was our intro to egg class. And they really enjoyed it, and they did a nice tour for the students. And the kids were actually welding an intro to eggs, so it was a great kind of crossover. So they got to see the robotic arm, and they asked questions about hand welding and some things. So it was a great kind of transition for the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Activities director and dean of students report, Max Mahar.
I'll just start right on that robotics thing. So part of the process of how all of that works is you purchase the game itself, and that's what they're explaining and how they're competing. And then the rest of the components, you just tear down and break, you can make your robotic robot however you want. So you have two robots that we can enter into competitions. I kind of jokingly said it's, you know, Vex's great business plan, but it was a great business plan. I should have thought of that, right? Anything we want to purchase and do, we have to do through Vex. It's a great thing, they, you know, don't get me wrong. But so if we wanted to enter three robots, we'd have to register another robot. It's not like we have the components and we can just make it. But those pieces then can be used year to year to do whatever they want, to build the robot, to play the game. So part of what I'm doing right now is with the instructors and learning myself from the kids in other schools is, what do you need on supply for inventory for things like that to actually run a decent program? Because this year was gonna be easily the most expensive year for us, because we had all the startup costs. So we've purchased over $4,000 worth of inventory. You know, you spend $600, $800 and get a shoebox full of parts is, is, you know, kind of discouraging, right? But that, so we need to figure out what do we need for a budget going forward. So when we have a good map of what that is, we want to get those people from the gala and explain to them what our program was, in hopes that we can write the grant for that money to continue each year to fund that program. And I think they've already expressed interest in doing that. And then we want to actually have that meeting in here, so they can see them compete and things like that. It's a, it's an interesting thing. We wanted to go to Kimball for a competition, and within five minutes of the instructor emailing me saying, hey, can you register us for this event, me getting on there and it was already full. And so we've, we've gotten some good feedback when they went to the league at St. Cloud. People couldn't believe how far along that we are in our first year doing it. Part of that is because of the Project Lead the Way courses and the background that the kids had through the camp they did this summer and stuff. But so we're, we're a startup in the robotics, and so it's exciting to see where it can go, but there's work to be done. So we're gonna absolutely have the meeting with the stakeholders to get them excited to see the progress that they had, because those kids can, can show the excitement better than I can. You can see how excited they are about it, so that's a great thing. Onto any other questions about the robotics stuff? So onto a couple of other items. In the middle of doing the next year's winter scheduling, there's been a change in the state high school league in how they schedule the wrestling, meaning that they have given us less competitions to schedule, but more matches that they allow. And so what that means is when you have an event, you want to have more teams there to participate. So when we host our home events, more than likely, all of the, what we're called triangulators will now be quadrangulars, which instead of taking up the one high school gym, we're probably gonna take up the high school gym and the middle school gym, so that there's spot for JV competition. Just sharing that in terms of space needed and so forth. So that's something that is just, I know right now, you know, without putting our basketball teams, you know, on the road or four games in one week, which is not a good thing either. It's hard to get wrestling matches at home and boys and girls away at the same time, and so there's just space issues there. With the office personnel out, our changeover, we haven't progressed to this, but now, over the Christmas break, we should be able to take care of it. You'll see some products coming. We're gonna have Central Minnesota Conference Academic All-Conference Award winners for this fall, which we're excited. We haven't had those awards given out since we moved over to the Central Minnesota Conference, but it's something that we need to do, and the Central Minnesota Conference offers that, so we're gonna do that. Another thing that'll be starting is an exit interview, transfer interview process. We talked about it a little bit as administrative team today, and I have a form that I'd be more than willing to share with you, is just kind of an agenda to speak through with people if they're transferring. Where it came from was there was a question about eligibility, if people are leaving school and things like that. And so obviously, we want to use that to explain to the student what their options are, but more importantly, to figure out if there's issues that we can solve here within the school to remedy it. You know, I always use the example, if someone's moving to Kentucky or something like that, I mean, there's nothing we're gonna do as a school to keep them here, but in that way we can give the board exact data as to why people are transferring out. So I think that's gonna be a really good thing. In January, the first we could get back, actually Matt Dickhausen, I invited him as well. I got reached out to by the marketing coordinator from Centra Care, who wants to, they have like a project of connecting in our community, and so they're interested in doing like some sports physical things and just some different healthcare things for students. I don't know if it's gonna be free of charge or discounted or just convenience or what it's gonna be, really don't, I know a lot, but I know Matt has great connections with people that aren't in this district too to offer it. And so we have a meeting, anytime we can create a partnership with somebody, that's a good thing. That's coming up in January, as well as January, talk about Matt's space, gym space, we have a wrestling tournament the first or the second Friday, excuse me, in January, and then the youth tournament after that. So you're aware of, you know, all those cars and the parking lot's full and you can't get around, and we're probably breaking the fire code, right Lou? That wrestling club brings in a lot of money. We have a brand new, a second brand new wrestling mat that the school district now didn't pay a dime for to put down for those programs. That's a great thing. That's coming up in January. And then in the works, because the kids are excited about video games, we're gonna try to get a Madden video game, because that'd be school appropriate, on and put the finals out on the scoreboard on the football field. So working on that with some of the technology stuff, I was having fun with the robotics kids, telling them, they could go home and tell their parents, hey, I gotta play, you know, video games to practice for school now, right? So I mean, every kid's happy about that. Does anybody have any questions for me? I kind of covered a lot of different things.
I like the sheet that you sent. I had a quick copy to glance at. The most important thing is, I would think in the discussion, you kind of can get off on tangents. It happens to us all, and it gives you a nice guideline to make sure that when you're done with an exit interview, you have covered all your bases.
Yeah, and maybe I should explain, how the process is gonna work is, obviously, my goal would be to have a face-to-face meeting, that would be number one. And if, if they decline or didn't want to set it up, then I would just try to ask questions over the phone, or of course, they could just decline, or I could email, and that would be the process. And it's just on a Google document, so it can all be easily shared anywhere that it needs to be and tracked easily online. Like the kids said, you don't lose any of the papers, right? You don't have to file it. And then you have all that data. You, you know, as a board, as a school, we want to know, why are people leaving? Is it jobs in the marketplace, or is it housing that we don't have control of, or is it curriculum, or student behavior, or anything that we do have control of, so.
Right. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, buildings and grounds supervisor report, Donnie Mayer.
Hello. Okay. I know it's kind of early yet, but I'm starting on quotes for the summer season. We were looking at roofing the middle, middle school gym and four small roofs over the middle school library. They are all, all the middle school roofs are 25 years old now, and we got, I'm working with Evan Larson and probably get the scope of work in a bid package going. We have approximately $300,000 for this project. Another project we have is carpeting the elementary school choir room. It's really in pretty rough shape, and quote I received for that was about $4,832 for 2,080 square feet of carpet and base. The next project I've quoted is for the high school office. We got three bathrooms, the copy room, and a little storage room, which comes to about $1,086 to retile these. But of course, it's asbestos tiles, because there's another $2,600. So the total cost of that would be about 36, well, $3,700, so. But of course, due to the asbestos again. Next project we've got, I've got quoted is to re-roof the concession stand slash storage shed up at a baseball field. Rather than put shingles back on it, we'll put steel on it, and that comes to about $6,195. There's one quote I got, so. I'm also working with Center Point Energy on a steam trap audit program. They'll come along, and well, what I've got so far is about 212 steam traps throughout both schools. They send the company out, they'll test our steam traps, tell me what it is, what style, what piping, and for $15 a trap, well, as we repair these, we will get the $15 back through Center Point Energy. Granted, we, I have what, $17,000 some odd dollars by new stream, or parts or steam traps. So we'll get, I would say, a good share of them fixed if they are bad. And a steam trap, it, all it does is it brings condensate back to the boiler. Otherwise, we wouldn't have any, boilers would be empty. Also looking at companies to clean our ductwork at the elementary school. Haven't found too many out there yet. There's a couple in the area, but they're, what do I want to say, mostly for housing. We've already cleaned the high school ductwork, I'm not sure what year that was, but the elementary school needs it. We've also got a little money in to replace passage doors in the van garage. Now that we have door closers on, the wind doesn't come through and slam these doors and tear them apart, so hopefully that will work. We also are looking at a new, we will be looking at a new zero-turn mower and a rider scrubber for the summer, rider scrubber for the high school. Oh, and also at the Land Trans building, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with that building, but one way or another, on the north side of the building, there are three windows and a wall, stub wall, and the windows are more or less falling out of it. So I got a quote, but to put, replace that whole stub wall with windows, which is about So that is what we have going so far. I'm sure there'll be more.
I should mention, other than Donnie, I've talked about, we have a lot of surplus stuff now, and I think one of our goals that Donnie have talked about is getting rid of all that surplus stuff come spring.
Oh, we have, we've already started that.
Good.
We've got a dumpster that came from Windy Hill. Granted, we're not gonna get a whole lot of money, if any, out of it, because it's all desk and real light stuff, so. But at least they're taking it. We're, you don't have to take the tops off. They're taking the whole line there.
Yep, some of those things just aren't worth us trying to get any money for, we're just not, so we're just trying to get rid of it as cheap as we can.
Any of the heavier metal and stuff, we're gonna keep that, but we can always send that off and make some money. And about the faucets around here, well, well, we'll have to have a discussion about that. I'm still thinking even to get rid of the bird baths and put two sinks in, wouldn't that be?
We're gonna have to look at options. Donnie, we, we've talked about this before, and certainly as we look at our five, 10-year plan, those will come up again. It, it just that, even if you put those sinks against the wall, then the nice thing about the bird baths is that everybody, all students can get around them at one time. You start putting things against the wall, and then you lose area that kids can watch. So there's a number of things that have to be discussed with that.
I think in the middle school.
I was gonna say, in this building.
In this building it would work, but I'm not sure about the elementary school.
And you're not, you know, they go to lunch as they leave, they don't have to wait and be in a line.
Right.
Then, you know, the high school has sinks. I, I do believe in middle school, it would work with, you know, two or three sinks along that wall.
Definitely.
So those will be talked about as we look at the five, 10-year plan.
Any other questions? Thanks, Donnie. Thank you. Administrative negotiation. Bruce, you have anything more to say about it?
No, we got more coming that Bob's working on right now, so we'll, next meeting we'll have some more coming through.
District-wide staff development, Heidi.
Oh, we met Thursday, December 7th. Again, just getting ready for the Painesville Educational Recognition Award that will be given to two staff members. And also this year, a senior student para that will be recognized as well. And that will be, they will be recognized at the Chamber banquet, which is January 20th. So the nominations forums and stuff are going out, that staff can vote.
Yep, they're already out now.
Yep. And then just talking about in-services coming up, topics, different things that will be talked about. Talking about in March, providing staff with a suicide awareness speaker, really focusing on that, and then also possibly next year, having a speaker on poverty, which again, are two big things that I think the more information and knowledge that staff can acquire to best help the students that may be in need of, of that.
Yeah, I think the only other thing I would add, Heidi, is that, you know, we, the staff development plan itself has been revamped for quite a while, so we're looking at revamping that now too. And then once we do, that'll come to the board.
That's all I have.
So, yeah, great. Technology committee, I, we attended a meeting on December 7th for technology, Bob and myself and administration, Garrett, and one of the biggest topics was the bandwidth. As we went to the one-on-one initiative, we didn't know exactly how the, the bandwidth was gonna hold up to everything, all these tech, all this technology and stuff like that. So we're just kind of looking into upgrading it, seeing which, what would be appropriate or not appropriate to upgrade to. So Garrett and Jonah and the rest of administrative teams are gonna be looking at that, something that, you know, in the near, near future, maybe this next year as an option. So that's something that they're looking at. But all that stuff will, excuse me, will be brought back with quotes and stuff like that, so what it would take for us, because as you heard, some of the students, they're saying that some of the technology that is in the classrooms are being kind of drugged down a little bit by it, but they're working through it right now, but they're aware of it, that's the biggest thing. And we kind of realize it might come to that.
We, we knew that it could become a problem, we just didn't want to jump ahead of ourselves and start adding bandwidth that wasn't necessarily needed for us. So that's why we're checking into it. We want to be efficient with it.
Yep. Because with all the technology, if you don't have, you can't use it, then it's kind of worthless, so. But we're looking at prices and stuff like that. The other thing we're looking at is one of the students, or a couple of students indicated is for the buses, to get some Wi-Fi in some of the buses, especially for the longer trips and stuff. Garrett is looking at a couple of those to do a trial, like in January and February, for at least one of them, one of the buses to be outfitted with it, and then see what's what. The other thing we're looking at is one of the students or a couple of students indicated is for the buses, to get some Wi-Fi in some of the buses, especially for the longer trips and stuff. Garrett is looking at a couple of those to do a trial, like in January and February for at least one of them, one of the buses to be outfitted with it, and then see once what the utilization is. And if we need to go to two of them, then that's what we would do. But again, we're not going to jump into just buying two or three of them. We're going to see once how they're going to be utilized first before we spend the money and stuff like that on them.
Yeah, and I had mentioned the Verizon tower antennas that they want to put on. That would be a way for us to pay for these hopefully without really going into our general net budget.
Yep. The other thing we talked about is some of the iPads, the retirement of the second and third generation iPads. They're trying to figure out what we're going to do with them, how we can dispose of them, if we're going to dispose of them, or what the process is going to be. So again, we all kind of knew that going into this one-on-one initiative, that some of the things that we bought over the course of the years are getting to that point where they need to be replaced. We're also looking at refurbishing the lab in 103 with some monitors and stuff like that. Again, some of the labs throughout the district, we're looking at what do we need to do with them or we can use that? Are we still feasible of using them in the same capacity or not? So each administrator of each building is looking at, you know, what can we do to either better the environment for the students or at least maybe not have to go and spend more money on technology when we have some of that? So they're looking at doing that also. K2, okay, so for K2 Google accounts, they're, each student right now has, up in the upper school levels, has Google accounts. And what we're trying, what they're finding out is that even the younger kids can benefit from this. So what they're looking at potentially is getting the kindergarten through second grade an account, so they can already start and add something that they're going to be able to use all the way through their whole school adventure here. So they're doing some homework right now and finding out what the, you know, what we can do and what we shouldn't do and stuff like that. So letters are going to be sent home to the parents in those grades, just to see once what the interest is in something like that. The other thing is printing from Chromebooks is another topic of discussion that we were talking about. Some of them are, you know, we're going to be able to print from them, some of them we don't need to print from. So we're just kind of going through the process. I don't know, Bob.
I think it's just a matter of checking to think. I think we're going to start, my guess would be we'll start opening it up so that we can print from the Chromebooks, but again, we want to do this slowly. We don't want to jump the gun. We want to do it in a manner that we don't have to, two weeks later, figure, well, that didn't work well. We'd rather do it in a way that we can make sure we can control it.
And right now, the year-to-date, I think we are down 181,000 copies less from the year before. So that's substantial. So if we can, if we can continue that route, you know, there's some savings there with both paper, but also the toners and copy machines and stuff like that. So again, it's one of those things that we're just going to be looking at before we open it up to everybody and, and we can always shut it down too if we find out.
181,000 copies?
That'd be some September then.
We're not sure. Donnie's still, I mean, he's going to think we're going to have to order paper next year, correct?
Correct.
We think the way things are going next year, we'll be able to use this, what we have and not even order any additional paper for next year.
Yeah, but there's also, you know, I guess you've got a maintenance fee on all the printers. And so reduces that cost too.
Well, you know, those are, those are all negotiated. I mean, we'll have to take one step at a time.
Yeah, this, this is the, I think.
Do you own paper, copy of paper contract?
No, we have that. It's a five-year contract though. But again, it's by copies. So for the maintenance, less copies, we also save on the fees that we have for printing things. So yes, it's not just the paper that we save on. It will, and we've reduced printers, we've reduced a lot as far as what we've done in the past.
Well, that's greenbacks that you're saving.
Yep.
And trees.
Yeah.
And the landfills.
So we're excited. It's going in the direction that we were hoping to go.
And the one thing nice about it, even if we open up the Chromebooks for printing, we can always go back and say, okay, we have saved this much and now how much of this coming back? So we could always, you know, there's some other things that we can do to make sure that we're printing responsible.
And I don't think necessarily that the students will use it because that's part of the purpose of Google School. But there are times when staff need to print notes and that, those are more of the type of things that we're looking at. So I, if we open it up, we're really not looking at increasing our printing costs that much at all.
But we have, at least we have a benchmark.
Absolutely.
We have a benchmark. So that's, was basically all we really talked about. Again, more to come with the technology as we keep on moving forward, but the bandwidth was a big, huge discussion that we really know that we need to look at, so. All right.
I have to say, the way that's gone, it's working really well. You've done some things that you, you can't figure out till you get it going, is all that I see that we're trying to figure out as we go. I just think everything is clicking along exactly how you and Garrick and everybody have told us all the way through.
And I would say hats off to our staff who have embraced Google Docs and, because they're really the reason that we're, we're saving on this right now.
Yeah.
Well, just look at last, was the last board meeting when we went with Mr. Spanier to the other room? I mean, it's, that's, every, every teacher is going through that, so I mean, kudos to the staff is huge. Garrett and Jonah and administration are only the small part of this here. It's the staff and the kids too, you know, so. Yeah, we couldn't be any happier, I don't think.
I think it's been very smooth. And when we've had different questions come up, our tech people as well have been right on it to try to figure it out, but yet also staff and students have been very flexible and patient, like, well, we'll get there if it hasn't been, you know, put the brakes on, so.
Good. All right. WCD report, Lou.
Well, we had a special meeting. This was not a regular meeting. And it was December 11th in South Center. We had a financial study done and this, this was to tell us what it would, the district would cost to add another school to our four-school district. And what, depending on the size of the new district, the study would help understand the staff needs and needs for the space and for extra positions and go through all that. And we had an update on the Beacon program, meaning if we, where we're at in moving the Beacon program to Melrose, to the ALC combining. And hopefully, I'm hopefully next year. I don't know if that will take place or not. And we've talked about the Star Program handbook and Star Program teacher and the Star Program behavioral aides and the record retention schedule. Like I said, this was a short, this was a special meeting. And our next meeting is January 8th and that'll be in Painesville. Got anything else?
I think the only thing I would add is that with the financial study, it was really a good study because the, what they did is they took, we've got one request from a school district to join the WCD right now, an official request. There have been questions by other districts on whether they can join. So what the financial study did is that it took a small, if a small school district would enter the WC, what, what impact that would have financially and staff-wise, what a medium-sized one would be and what if we brought a large one in? Are there benefits to all of us if we do that? So I think that was the discussion that we had. I think it was a great discussion. I think at the next board meeting, the, the board will decide whether they're going to allow that other.
Why don't you think, most of the superintendents think we're better off leaving?
I think at this point, I think the superintendents would say, and I don't want to ask because the board will have to make that decision. I think the superintendents would say, at least right now, that they're not sure that we see the financial advantage to making the move. And the other piece that I would, would say is that we have a number of things that we need to continue to work on in WCD. We need to become the most efficient piece we can. And there are ways for the WC to help us. You know, there are school districts around us that have less, are small, smaller child count that use those programs. So what are they doing in their own district so that they don't have to use an alternative program? And I will let even Lori and I have started talking a little bit about that. What can we do that would be financially benefit, beneficial to us if we did it here rather than send a student some other way? It may cost us some money upfront, but save us more money on the other end.
Well, it'd be a lot better too if they can combine the two.
Well, as far as combining Melrose for us, it's much less transportation costs and I think we gain an awful lot of efficiency. I think all the superintendents are very much in favor of combining. You can use staff. If staff are gone, it's, it's just much more efficient and, and we would save on transportation costs on top of it. As always, there's a little cost upfront because, because there's remodeling.
Our students would gain educational time too, because right now they're, they have our work.
Yeah. And the other piece that we talked a little bit about also is are there programs, if we become more efficient, are there programs that we can add to the WCD that we have to send our kids right now to other programs? So all of that's being talked. I think great discussion.
Thanks, Lou. Administrative report, Robert Hewitt.
Yeah, just a few things, just a reminder, the next facility meeting is on January 3rd, 6 o'clock in the Elementary School Media Center. So we'll continue our discussion there. I wanted to talk about fundraiser reports from the FFA Test Plot and Corn Drive, and they are sitting on my desk at work right now. So I'll try to get those on the agenda for, for the next meeting. We're setting up a number of dates for the soup search. I did send out a text, Tom. Some of you have not replied back. Please do take a look at that again. And if you didn't get the text for some reason, get ahold of me and do reply back because the, one of the dates that we need to set, we've kind of have focused on, we've kind of set a date when the interviews may be. The posting for the superintendent is out now. That's out and about on our website and in other areas that Greg has put in. We've looked at a date where interviews will take place. We'll finalize that. We've also looked for a date for the next search committee meeting, just the committee of the board to meet. But one date that I do need to get set is a date that Greg would come out and visit with community members on what they would like the superintendent to be, the skills and those types of things. Also the staff, the administrative team, the, I think the district office staff would be one, and then also the board. But I'm looking for a time for the, the board one to make sure that it does meet with you guys so that you would get your input on what you would like the skills of the new superintendent to have. So just be aware, if you haven't answered that, look, if you have any questions, give me a call. And I'm just trying to set a date. I'd like to do that even before this, before Thursday if possible. So take a look. There's also other texts that I'll be sending out. I've been talking about and just haven't gotten into my schedule, a policy committee. So if you're on that, I will be texting out on that to find a date. Also the finance committee, I'd like to do that and, and the facilities for the five and 10-year plan. I'd like to get those set up right after the break. So right even in the first week when we get back, I'd like to start getting those going. We'll have a lot to get doing, get done and the year will disappear fast. So just look for those. I've discussed the reserve center. Hopefully over the winter break, I will start to get my plan developed and out to Yolanda so that they can take a look at that. I may bounce a few ideas off individual board members who were involved in that in the first place. Let's see, we had talked a little bit about working with the Gala Committee in regards to keeping them informed. The Gala Committee has come up with a memorandum of understanding that kind of just spells out the, what we're going to do and what the, and what the Gala Committee is going to do. All right? And we need to just work through that, make sure that everybody's in agreement, but that will be signed off on by the school district and the Gala Committee, the Painesville Foundation. And then also a budget sheet, and we're looking at that. So that, there is no doubt that what we're using the dollars for are exactly what the community agreed for them to use for. And there's pieces in the memorandum understanding, for instance, updating each other so that everybody knows what, exactly what's going on. And I think as we go down this road, I don't think there will be any doubt about any questions on it being used the way that it was intended for, to be used. MSBA Leadership Conference, just remember Wednesday, the 10th. There are some, a couple of trainings that go on. Usually one's a superintendent one and I, for the love of me, I cannot remember what the other one is. I'm going to go to that one, the one out, but I'll send out a reminder to the board on that, that Wednesday night. And then the conference, Leadership Conference itself is on the 11th and then on, on the 12th, part of the 12th, and then, then we're done. So just a reminder to that. Also, let's see, integration plan, I'll be working on that hopefully over the break. I just, we need to make some changes and we'd really like to see if we can get somebody to come in and talk about poverty, if I can work that into the plan. We have a number of students who live in poverty and it's always nice for our staff to know how best to work with those students. Let's see, so meetings, weather, some are supposed to come in this weekend. My last check on that, just so you're aware, is that supposedly tomorrow night, it's supposed to be north of I-94. And now it looks like, although I haven't listened too much today, the weather on Thursday and Friday is supposed to be south, moving south. If that happens, we should be okay, but you just never know what track those are going to take, so keep ears open for that. And then I guess the last thing, I just, you know, we're going to be going into winter break. I hope everybody has a great and safe winter break.
Thanks, Bob. Any other board sharing? You're okay. I got a motion from Lou.
Second.
I got a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carry. Happy holidays.